Hamilton County Commission Meeting, February 8th, 2024. I'm going to ask everyone to introduce themselves who are on the dials.
Kristi Rushell, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerdumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. We start each of our meetings with prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join us in silent prayer. Amen. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerdumas?
Yes.
Okay, at this time we'll take public comments. I don't see any cards. Just double checking. Okay, all right, no public comments. All right, we'll open it up for commission comments and statements. I'm going to start it off. I want to thank everyone who came out to the state of the county and really appreciate it. We had a, I believe, The Blaze Holds, 500 people, and they told me we had 600. We had some people downstairs in the overflow to watch it on stream. And I'm just excited that so many people are interested in what we're doing as a county. And so just really want to thank everyone. I also want to thank everyone that helped make it possible, put it together. I want to thank Jeff Aludo and all of the staff that volunteered the day of. Thank you very much. I especially want to thank my Chief of Staff, Veda Stevens, and Deonte Morris. And they've been working on, working on, working on, put all of the pieces together. I want to thank Bridget Dorchery as our Communications Director and Amanda Carter, Public Relations Specialist, who worked with our office to help put some of the videos and so forth together as well. So thank you. As I said, all of the county employees are truly, truly, thank you for volunteering your time. Everybody from the ushers, the greeters, the check-in tables, et cetera. Also want to thank Anne Sessler to help with our team on seating, because it's a lot when you don't. You have more people than you have seats. I want to thank the staff at Memorial, Hamilton County Memorial Hall. Guys were fantastic under the direction of Joshua Steele and Prestige. Thank you for all of your work. Want to thank PN Everson Price, who was the voice and emcee for the evening. I want to thank the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. I really want to thank you all, making sure everyone was safe. And you were also very, people have just been bragging how courteous everyone was. We want to thank Ollie Strolli Marvin Smith, who catered the event. And in my statement, I said, "Save me some food," and nobody did. At the end, there was nothing left, so our food must have been really good. Thank you, Sybil, our photographer of Cincy Black Travel Guide Photography, and Deonte Payne from Impact Promotions that also streamed along with ICRC, City Cable. Thank you all so much as well, so hopefully I didn't miss anyone. Took a lot of people to help pull all those pieces together. I do want to thank Darryl Haley and Metro for working with Sandra from SOACT and Viola Brown to help get the seniors there. We've been getting good feedback, the seniors got a chance to come. Don't like to drive at nighttime. And I want to thank Metro for bringing them at no cost, so they could be a part of the state of the county. I want to thank the Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church. Their rendition under Reverend David Minor, who is also an influencer down in the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And their Black History Tribute was the song "We Shall Overcome" that was originally written by Cincinnati's own Louise Shropshire. And people could go down to the Black Music Walk of Fame. I encourage you to do so, to learn about her story and so many others. So I wanted to thank them, they did a fantastic job. Steven Stanford, who was Air Force Veteran, and he is a newly appointed member of the Veteran Services Commission. And I appreciate him coming and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance along with the Complete Color Guard of the Sheriff's Office. Thank you so much for that. So I think I hit all the people on here. People who were not able to make it, it is available on YouTube. And you can be a part of it and hear the message of one Hamilton County. Right after the State of the County, we talked about a lot of things there. But we got right to work with the kickoff of the 513 Relief Bus. And I think that's why I'm on conservative energy right now. But that event was unbelievable to see where we have come from with the 513 Relief Bus. We've helped 17,000 people already, and now we're kicking off the 2024 season. And the theme was Everything Hamilton County. So we picked up all of the services, Hamilton County, put them in one location. And yesterday, I don't know what the numbers are, somebody said it was close to almost 1,000 people possibly that were served. And it happened at Corinthian Baptist Church. I want to thank Travina Adams and Scott Wilson, county staff and employees that worked and helped make this possible. I want to thank my staff, I know there were several meetings about how this was going to look. And I just was so amazed, I think Amanda did this graft. And I remember we were just starting, it was just a flyer out of my office. And now we have grass, and they had different areas. And I mean, it looked like a concert, the way she had it laid out. And I wish I had a picture, put it up there, but it was just to see us how we're doing. And hearing a lot about the Veteran Services, who hadn't been out in the community, they were there. Veteran Services was out in the community yesterday. And so that showed a new day, I know Women and Girls Commission was there. Mary Mallon and her team, thank you so much. Everybody was there, JFS, the auditor's office, the recorder's office, the treasurer's office, was right there doing, helping people right away. Birth certificates, free birth certificates in partnership with Public Health, UC Health. They had nurses, we were taking glucose and blood pressure checks and so much more. And when you think about the amount of money that we are putting out there in services, to get these, to get some of these tests, you have to have a copay sometimes. You come to our bus, there's no copay. There's a dollar value in what we're putting out there to help the people. And it shows a new way of how we're delivering services. We're delivering them directly to the people versus the people having to find those services. And I want to thank Pastor Casey Smith and Pastor Timothy Lane, who worked with, I believe, our staff here to open up and make sure everything. We even had fresh produce, the Free Store Food Bank with fresh produce there. The way it was just so organized. And then our top staff were out there, Jeff was out there. I know that our deputies were out there as well. And so I just want to thank you, I think we got it like, we got the system going now. And people are just, they were just saying so much of thank you, thank you, thank you. And some people learned about some new things that the county, it was not new things, but it's new to them, that they didn't know that the county offered. And I know Holly and Anston were there to help direct people to the right places. But we also were, we also were having relationships. So Amanda has a little video, I want y'all to see what happened yesterday. So just wanted to give you just a little clip of all the people we've been able to help. The Office of Reentry was also there and wanted to highlight them as well. But everybody, as you can see in there, there were a lot of different, Office of Small Business was there. Our Inclusion and Equity Director, Robert Bell, was there. I mean, people could talk directly, and we got a lot of leads and a lot of people getting them on the list to do business with us. It was just a really great event. So go to 513relief.org to find out where the bus is going next. The other thing I just wanted to highlight, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., his son, Martin Luther King III, and his wife Andrea Waters King were in town. And I got a chance to go there, I know my colleagues were there. I got a chance to speak at a press conference that the Cincinnati Reds has a partnership with the King Foundation. And this partnership is called Realizing the Dream Initiative, where by the time Dr. King reaches 100 years old, which is in five years, they want to have service globally. And this is something that everybody can do something. And so they're going to be back to talk a lot more about that. But they were kind of kicking it off because the Cincinnati Reds, being our first professional baseball team, was also the first team now to sign up for this partnership in Major League Baseball. There's some NFL teams that have signed up, but not Major League Baseball. And the Cincinnati Reds was first. And so Phil Castellini and the Reds team, who was doing a lot of public service in the community, this was just a natural fit. But I wanted to highlight that Dr. King's son, Martin Luther King III, was here. And I was happy to reunite with him. He and I was at the 50th anniversary of the March on Washington, where I was able to give a speech. Was humbled to give that speech there, and he and I have been friends since. So I was happy to see that my hometown, Cincinnati, would be the first to sign up for Major League Baseball. So stay tuned. And Jeff, as they're signing up, I think it's not just the baseball teams, professional baseball teams, but I think nonprofits, government entities can also sign up. And I want us to look into having Hamilton County possibly be in the first county to sign up. And because we have a lot of workers and people who volunteer every day and do, you know, public, give back, public service. So I would like to look into that and see if possibly we could be the first county to sign up to participate. And he reminded us that he used to be a county commissioner himself. So he has an affinity for county commissioners, he understands our plight. So those are my announcements. I did go to the opening today, I was with Commissioner Kesterman, Health Commissioner Kesterman, opening his new facility in Norwood, and got a chance to get a tour of that. And then right before I came here, I was at the Southwest Workforce Council meeting, where I swore in the two new members, Zach Kiffmeyer and Nathan Strange. So that completes kind of my report for right now. Vice President Dreehouse?
Thank you. I too went to the Public Health Open House up in Norwood. Congratulations to Greg Kesterman and his team. It is a wonderful facility, which is replacing the facility that was on McMillan and their clinics. So it's a great space, I applaud them for the work they did very quickly to get that up and running so that there was no interruption in service by way of the folks that they serve through public health. So congratulations to Commissioner Kesterman. I also went and represented the commission at an event over the weekend, the Kroner Dry Cleaners 85th Anniversary. I happen to use Kroner Dry Cleaner, as does my mom, and she has for like 60 years. But they had their anniversary, the place was packed, it was out at Harvest Home. And Ray and his family have been wonderful advocates for the community of Westwood and Chiviet, where they live. And the businesses in Chiviet, they live in Westwood. But thank you to the Kroner family for their years of service, not only through the small business, but also for the volunteer work that they do in the community. It's a family affair with the Kroners, and I was happy to go recognize their achievements on behalf of the commission. Some of the other things, I also went to the Reds Ballpark. Thanks to the Castellinis for having the Reds be the first MLB team, as you say, to participate in Realizing the Dream Program initiated by Martin Luther King III and Andrea Waters King. So I won't go into a lot of detail there, but I was happy to see that. I love that the Reds are the first again, I mean, we're the first baseball team, and now we're the first to sign up with this initiative. And I think there was a lot of pride in that room on behalf of the community to be all in on the initiative that they're proposing. So glad to attend that. Also went to the bus, so you named a lot of the partners, I don't want to be repetitive, but I was struck by the services that were available. There are such a variety of services to address the variety of needs in the community. And the partnerships were both internal, so lots and lots of staff were there. And excited to be there, really, there was such a nice level of enthusiasm, I thought, at the church. But also external partners who came and were happy to be participating with the county to try to address some of the needs of the folks that came to the facility. So I visited all of them, but I want to mention that Scott Crowley, the county recorder, was there. Pavin Pareek was there, the clerk of courts, Commissioner of Women and Girls, as you said, handing out diapers and period products. There were a lot of diapers going out the door, they were running out of diapers. Thanks to Sweet Cheeks for partnering on that effort. JFS had a long line, as they always do. Board of Elections was registering people to vote, Free Store Food Bank, Legal Aid, importantly, was there, talking to people about property taxes. The sheriff, the quick response team, as you said, there were many, many organizations. So it was, it was good to see, it's, we've taken a turn with the bus. I feel like we're expanding the services and trying to respond to what each community needs. And I think that's appropriate, so I was really happy to go out there and participate in that. And then as you, you already covered the State of the County, I was going to mention that one as well. Of course, I was in attendance, happy to join the event. And congratulations on a well-attended, well-produced event. So that's all I have. But again, just excited to be at all of these things there. We've started the year in a very energetic way, pushing out to the public what is available by way of the county, and I'm happy to participate in all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. I don't want to be repetitive, but I do want to mention about the event we had on Monday down at the Reds Stadium. And it was a historical event, of course, and it was just personally historical for me, just to be amongst this fine gentleman and his wife. So I'm looking forward to realizing the dream, as was said earlier, through Hamilton County. In addition, I got a letter from the Village of Newtown, where they were thanking us for the infrastructure, Stormwater Infrastructure Grant, in amounts of $150,000 and $214,900. I just want to thank them for sending the letter, I'm not sure. I know we all got the letter, I don't know if the clerk has it or not. In addition, I had met with Joyce Padreal and Sarah Benzinger from Senator Brown's office. And when I met with them, I said I would emphasize the fact that the governor had said that the closer youth are to their homes and the smaller facilities that they are incarcerated in would be the best for them and the best results. And so I mentioned to the two ladies that Hillcrest would be a great place to add funding through the governor's office or however the legislature chooses to do it, to help us out with that process. Because getting Hillcrest up and running again will be somewhat of an expensive endeavor, but we know how important it is. In addition, I wanted to thank CMHA. I received a concern from a client who is under CMHA, who was about to be put out of her home with five children. And I wrote it late at night, and the next morning I had a response that they were trying to do the best they could to help this young lady, and they were able to do that. So I know it's hard, and I know there are a lot of people on the list, but this was a desperate situation, and I wanted to thank CMHA for doing that. Oh, I wanted to talk about the State of the County address, I just thought it was excellent. I was wore out by the time I left there to look at all the things that our board has done and the way it was put together, I just thought it was excellent. And I just wanted to let you know that and congratulate you on that presentation, okay? And lastly, we have a gentleman who is here from the Chiviet Police Association, Officer Gordon Smith. I had indicated, if you want to come right here, I had indicated once a month, I would try to, or Alice and Robert Bell would try to get someone in with Inspire as recipients of the Inspire Grant. So you might, you might want to turn this way, I don't think the camera can get you. But this is Officer Gordon Smith, who was nice enough to scoot over. Can they get you? They'll figure it out. Is that the best way to do, Bridget, or?
I think when they, when he speaks, they can turn it behind him, but while you're speaking, or maybe sit it down, try to put it, sit, not stand in front of it, turn it this way. Yeah, use this as a backdrop. Turn it around, there it is.
Okay, thank you.
There it is, okay, all right, there we go.
Thank you. This is Officer Gordon Smith, and I asked him to say a few words, and you could tell us how many youths you've served.
I'm not actually a police officer or never was, but I represent Chiviet Police Association. That organization started in World War II, when all the able-bodied men went to war. And the remaining members of the community decided to start a club that would protect Chiviet from any invasion in World War II and were the police force at that time. So when the war was over, they continued to have a club, and it's going on since then. So, and we, it's a nonprofit, and we do things in the community. And we started the soccer program. I started running it in 1979, was the first year. And I had four children, and all four of them played soccer through there. When I was a kid, I lived in Scotland for a while, so I'm a very good soccer player, because when I came back here, there was no soccer, so I didn't play soccer for 20 years, because there was none. So when this gets started again with the soccer, I was really into coaching and everything. And I've been running the club now since '79, so it's almost 44, 45 years. And we have, last year we had nine teams in Lollipop, which was about 140 kids. And probably 60, 70% of them are from Cincinnati Public Schools. And we're in a league, which is mostly the Catholic schools, you know, the visitations and the St. Ignatius and stuff. And so the kids we have have nowhere else to go, because all these Cincinnati Public Schools, they don't have soccer teams. So, and we keep, we're a nonprofit, we try to keep our fees as low as possible. And so this grant was great, because everything's going up, I got to keep raising fees. We just try to break even, we don't make any money. So I haven't had to raise my fees now for two or three years, so because of the money we had coming in. And of course, a lot of these kids are from low-income people. So yeah, the grant was great, worked out great for us.
And how many youths were you able to help with, how many youths were you able to help with the grant?
Well, there's about 140 kids in our club, yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, yeah, we got that many. Well, what happened, St. Martin's, they folded, and their club kind of, we absorbed St. Martin's. So we're kind of like, we call CPA, Chiviet Police Association, and...
Well, thank you so much, and I see on the notes you bought uniforms, field house permits, and some of the fees, as you were saying earlier. So I thank you so much for coming in, but I'll open it up if my colleagues...
Yeah, it really helped us out. And I'm trying to do everything I can to keep the fees without raising fees, because people can't afford it.
Right, right.
Okay.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate it, all that you're doing, and knowing that our grants are helping the kids directly.
Hopefully we get it again this year.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, yeah, you almost had me, you almost had me. I catch myself.
Right, right.
There is an application process, and they will be getting things back to us.
Yeah.
Vice President Dreehouse?
Yeah, I just thank you for what you are doing for the community. I used to be a soccer coach myself, that's not easy, because the kids are all over, you know.
I was coaching, I coached three teams to run the Lollipop this year.
That's a lot.
And, yeah, I'm really into it, obviously.
Yeah, that's great, that's great, well, thank you.
I just love doing it.
You're giving them an opportunity to be part of a team and part of something fun, so thanks for what you do.
Yeah, most of these kids wouldn't be playing. And on that picture there, that's 12 and 13-year-old girls. Most of those kids I had from age four, and they've been with us all that time.
That's great, yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. That was it? Thank you very much. I forgot to acknowledge also Allen Temple. I was there on Sunday, they celebrated 200 years. And I was happy to present a proclamation on behalf of our, on behalf of our board, and also be able to speak, as I've had a lot of partnerships with Allen Temple over the years. But one thing they showed was the video, and I'm so glad they had this video. I had no idea that Allen Temple originally was downtown where Procter &amp; Gamble headquarters is now. And that they had to negotiate with Procter &amp; Gamble to move the church so that Procter &amp; Gamble could build their international global headquarters. And they showed the trustees, Mr. William McClain and others, and they were a lot younger than, during the negotiation with Procter &amp; Gamble. So I just was, I was like, wow, I was, it was, it blew me away. And that's why recording this history and documentation is so important as they pass down it to the next generation. So I thought that was pretty cool, learning it, and congratulations to Allen Temple. All right, Mr. Aludo?
Commissioners actually have no by-leaves today. I could be duplicative and just thank all the staff that have been out at all the events that we've had over the past couple of weeks, including the 513 Relief Kickoff yesterday. It was fantastic. But as all the commissioners have already said, thanks to everybody who was out there yesterday, including our past helping vendors and some of the new partners that we've had as well. It was a fantastic turnout. I have no by-leave items today, but I do believe there's one by-leave item on the agenda, but I think it was submitted by Commissioner Dreehouse. So I'll defer to the board for the introduction of that particular item.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yeah, thank you. This is the resolution in support of homeowner relief and property tax solutions. This is something that we talked about at the hearing when we had individuals coming in, talking about the challenge of paying property taxes as the property assessments have gone up, the taxes have gone up. And we were trying to think through ways to be supportive and things that we can do, because we are not in charge of the property tax issue. And yet, we're trying to figure out ways to be supportive nonetheless. So this resolution was discussed at that time. And so in, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but in a nutshell, it talks about our desire to provide some support, primarily through three things. One is House Bill 263. This is the one that talks about certain individuals that would be provided some relief, primarily seniors. The second one is House Bill 187. That is the House Bill that talks about taking the assessment process and spreading it out over three years instead of one to moderate the increase in property taxes, presumably. And then the third thing talks about school funding. So we have an unconstitutional funding system here in the state of Ohio, and have for many years. And it asks the legislature to please address that funding system, because the vast majority of the property taxes are going to the school districts, because the school districts have to levy local property owners, because the state is not kicking in their fair share of the education piece. The state, as you know, is charged with doing two things. One is passing a structurally balanced budget, the other one is providing education, public education, quality education to kids. I feel like we are failing on number two. And so this says, "State Legislature, please pay attention to that obligation. Fund schools at a more adequate funding amount so that the local levies don't have to expand and become so large." So that's what the resolution does. And the last part says, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners does call upon the Ohio State Legislature to take up measures to provide immediate relief to homeowners in light of the recent increase in the property taxes due to the increase in property reevaluation." due to the increase in property reevaluations. And be it further resolved, we also call upon the legislature to take up a fair and constitutional school funding model in light of the undue burden the current model places on local property taxes. So I will offer that. I'll make a motion that we pass the resolution.
Thank you. But we want to have some discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. Thank you for the resolution. I know that we had, we had a packed house down here of citizens concerned about the property taxes going up. And we have thousands that are out there that didn't, couldn't make it to the meeting, who are upset. You can't go anywhere to grocery stores, a beauty shop, wherever you go, people are upset. And it is hitting people of all diverse backgrounds, all political affiliations, and all ages, but particularly extra hard amongst senior citizens. At the state of the county, we had a group of seniors that came in, about 35, 40 of them that were there. And one of their biggest concerns was, I paid my house, I got my house, I paid my bills, I'd worked the job, I retired, I deserve to be able to hold on to my house, and my house be able to be passed down to my children, and my children's children, if necessary. And this is, as I said, at the state of the county, this is a state of emergency. It's not one that we, as the commissioners, control, which we did, we probably could get some done, but we don't control it. And it's a state of emergency, not just for Hamilton County, but throughout the whole state, where we possibly will be pricing people out of the state of Ohio, particularly counties like ours that border other states. We border Kentucky. We border Indiana. And so this has to be fixed. I know at the State House, both of us being there, it takes some time sometimes to get bills done, particularly if you're in the minority. But I also know, being at the state, that I've seen times when the governors have intervened, and things get moving very quickly. I have called on governor, in addition to this resolution, called on the governor to intervene, because this is a state of emergency that is affecting all 88 counties and affects Ohio in general. I know that they had some surplus money and some other money that maybe can help with a short-term fix. I know that the governor appoints the tax commissioner. Maybe they could get together and come up with better payment plans, because we have people on payment plans. They agreed, they saved up the money, they're ready to pay, they had so many months to get it. And then at the final hour, here comes a new bill that says, oh, by the way, your payment plan is going up by $700, $800. And, oh yeah, by the way, you only have 30 days to add that to what you already agreed to pay. And if you don't, your whole payment plan is blown up. And now your home is at risk of being in foreclosure. You got to pay it all. I don't understand how you sign a payment plan, and you're going to pay on the date they tell you, but 30 days before, now your payment plan goes up, or you're off the payment plan. So we have to, we have a short-term goal and a long-term goal. Long-term, we got to fix this system. It's wrong, the way they're doing the reevaluations. Short-term goal is people that are at risk of losing their homes right now. And so I have made a call into the governor, and I'm waiting to hear back, and I'm hoping I hear back soon, to see if he could come in and intervene, along with his tax commissioner and all the folks up there, to see can we do something temporarily, some moratorium, some type of payment plan, something, so that these folks can hold on to the houses that they have while we're fixing future things. So I support this resolution of going on record to the legislature to get it done and get it right. And I'm going to continue to be calling the governor to see if something he can do on a short-term basis to help people hold on while they try to fix it and get it done correctly. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. As you mentioned about the governor, I wanted to draw my colleagues' attention to, all the way down in the resolution where it says, now therefore be it resolved. You mentioned about the governor. I had made a comment, I sent a comment in that I'd like to include the governor on that second line, where it says, calling upon the Ohio State Legislature and the governor to take up measures. And so I don't know if we want to put it in here, or if we want to do a separate resolution to the governor, but I didn't, I made a response to, I think, Dreehouse, your office.
Okay. Oh, I'm okay with that being an amendment. Can we put an amendment? Would you accept the amendment at the last line to say the legislature and amended to see and governor?
I am happy to do that. I think, though, it might be more direct if we had a different resolution, straight out to the governor, because this deals with House bills and the school funding model, and those are all relative to the legislature. I'd be happy to draft something, or have someone else draft something to the governor. I'm not opposed to putting it in. That would be fine. But if we want to really send something to the governor that's not related so much to the legislature, we might want to redraft it. But I leave that to you. I mean, I'm happy to do one way or the other.
I would think the amendment, because if the legislature knows that the governor will sign the bill if it gets to him, I think would be helpful. My piece on the governor was just a phone call to try to say, hey, can you work something out with your tax commissioner or someone? But I'm not opposed to something else going to.
Maybe we can do both.
Yeah, I was just.
Okay, so there's a friendly amendment then on the table, to add, Leslie, I'm talking to you, now therefore be it resolved, in that section, calling upon the Ohio State Legislature and Governor DeWine to take up measures. So it's just adding and Governor DeWine in that location. I accept a friendly amendment. Was there a second to the amendment?
I was seconding.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerdumis?
Yes.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, that's all.
Okay. There's a motion on, would you like to make the motion?
I thought, yeah, we just passed the.
Oh, as amended. Oh, as amended.
Make a motion to pass the resolution as amended.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. Are you going to make the motion?
I just did.
Okay, I'll second it.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerdumis?
Yes. Any other, no other by-leaves? We'll go to the calendar. And, Mr. Engineer?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I only have two items today, but first, I'd like to share some good news that I received this morning. I got a letter from the Ohio Department of Transportation. We applied for a local, major bridge program grant, and we were awarded 95% of the cost, the amount of almost $600,000 for Sharon Road Bridge for fiscal year '27. So.
Congratulations.
So it's, we, I would like to thank my staff for their hard work. Item number one is resolution authorizing an amendment to capital electric line builders. This is for our traffic signal maintenance. This, the original contract was three years with two one-year extensions. This would extend us for 2024. The annual contract amount remains the same. There's been some updates to the base labor rate and the fringe rates. We remain the same contract amount of $75,000. Item number two is a resolution to put Project 502-313 Anderson Ferry and Crookshank Road improvements out for public bid. These are located in Delhuyen Green Township. Bid, opening date of March 7. Engineer's estimate is $1,166,000. We have a sort of grant for $1,49,400 of that. The remaining $116,600 will come out of Permissive Auto Tax Fund, of which we have a $15.7 million balance currently.
Thank you. I have a question. It's not exactly item one, but because it brings up the issue of traffic signal maintenance, the issue at Trios, is that with the, trying to get a signal?
I have not heard anything more on that. I have not received any studies, anything, anything recent on that since we last discussed it.
Okay. And hopefully, it's gotten resolved.
I would hope so, yes.
Okay. I'll open it up, Vice President Dreehouse.
Happy to support these. And I'm wondering, Mr. Engineer, were you at the OKI meeting today?
I was.
Okay. They had put out the call, Metro put out the call for projects.
Yes, they did.
I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
That is correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay. Commissioner Dumas?
No questions.
Okay, I make a motion to approve items one and two.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerdumis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item, oh, sorry. Item number three, right?
Sarah Adams is here to walk us through the proposed agreement with the Community Action Agency.
Good afternoon. I only have one today. It'll be item number three for a resolution with the Board and Community Action Agency for $150,000. Just to recall, the Board did approve reallocation of ARPA funding back in the fall of 2023, in the amount of $150,000. That was to provide emergency housing for immigrant populations. The resolution with the agreement is that we want to work with Community Action Agency. They will administer these funds on our behalf. Community Action Agency will determine eligibility, provide housing for up to 30 days, primarily through hotel stays, but also working with local organizations for placements for families, for transportation, food, and any other resources that they can provide for those families. I do have, from Community Action Agency, Matt Strauss and Nikki Williams here, and I'd like to invite them up in case they'd like to say anything about the program.
Hi, I'm Nikki Williams. I am the Chief of Staff and Vice President of Community Relations for the Community Action Agency. First of all, I want to thank you all for your support with this. What we've seen is an increase of immigrants in Hamilton County. And this is going to really enable us to support those immigrants. What we know is that homelessness amongst the county anyways, does a lot to our economy. It does a lot to our healthcare system, and as well as our criminal justice system. So it's very hard for immigrants, because they have language barriers, and they don't have a good support system here, and it's difficult for them to navigate through our community. So we have an immigrant liaison who is at the Community Action Agency, who will help to connect the immigrants with resources, that the Free Store Food Bank, we're working with Compass, we're working with Santa Maria, so we can help them to find housing. And we'll also be putting them up with hotel stays. So we are partnering with Extended Stay for, to get rooms blocked, so that they can have those 30-day stays until they can figure out long-term housing. And then I have Matt Strauss here as well. He's our housing advocate.
Just want to say thank you on behalf of the Community Action Agency, and also the people we serve. I know this immigrant community, it's an emergency situation for them. They would like nothing more than to find stability, happiness, and the ability to become Hamilton County taxpayers someday. Thank you for letting us work with them. And thank you. I also want to thank Sergio from our office, who worked really hard to put this together. He would be here today, but he was unable, and so I'd like to give him some credit, because he worked hard on this.
Thank you. I will open it up, Vice President Dreehouse. Any questions?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for partnering with us to provide this service. I mean, we know we've got an increase in immigrants in our, yeah, our population, our community. And I think there are unique struggles there, related to housing, in particular, and food insecurity, and some legal assistance. And so we're trying to look at all fronts, but you guys are the experts on the housing front. So without you, this doesn't work. So thank you for the partnership that you're providing through this grant.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Sarah, you may be able to answer this. We had already allocated money for immigrant housing several, or a few months ago. So is that out of the same pot, or is this additional money that we're?
This is out of the same pot. It just takes, as you know, the process to get contracts completed and that done. This is just us getting that contract completed and allowing C.A.D. to get to work.
And how much do we allocate? Do you remember?
$150,000, just for this specific pot alone.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I have.
Pleasure.
I just want to also highlight, you all also help others with housing. We had some people, a lot of people show up at the 513 yesterday. And that's some of their concerns, because we have a housing shortage. And you were saying that this is temporary, till they can get permanent housing. How confident are we when we have a shortage already of Hamilton County citizens right now, who can't get housing?
Right. And we understand that. And that's why we are partnering. We know this is temporary. So that's why we're partnering with other partners and organizations that are, you know, that's their area of expertise. So that's why we're reaching out to Santa Maria, and the Free Store Food Bank, and Compass, and even strategies to help with that problem, because we understand that this is temporary. So, and we need something that's more long-term. And we're working with other organizations who specialize in that.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add that one of the conditions for participating in this program is working with local agencies, proof that you are working with them to move your case forward.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because I know you guys have been overloaded and backlogged. And I just want to make sure this, you're able to handle this, but still handle, you got a lot of people in backlog, like we have had, just because of the overwhelming need. But you'll be able to do both, I guess, is what I want to, I'm asking this, because this is what people are going to be asking me.
Oh, no, we understand. And so, yes, we do, we did take that into consideration before deciding to go through with this, you know, this project. So we do know that we do have the capacity to do that. And like I said, we have an immigrant liaison, Sergio, who, like, is unfortunate to be here today, but he's going to be working hand-in-hand with those immigrants, too.
Okay, great. Thank you. I make a motion to approve item number three.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerdumis?
Yes. Thank you both. Thank you, all three of you. Thank you. Mr. Ludo, the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners. Consent agenda, they, I'll walk through very briefly. Item number four is a resolution adopting the 2024 Marine Patrol Assistance Grant for the Sheriff. This is $24,000 grant. There's an $8,926 match that is on your agenda. Item number five is a budget adjustment of $40,740 for personnel expenses at the Law Library and at the Department of Environmental Services. Item number six is a resolution approving the purchase of two 2024 Ford Escapes as replacements in the Hamilton County Planning and Development Office for $61,484. Item number seven is Resolution P020-24 executing purchase orders of Hamilton County. This is for a total of $65,072,823. There's several large purchase orders on this particular resolution, including the annual work plans and agreements with Council on Aging at $27 million, I believe, University of Cincinnati, through the Indigent Healthcare Levy at $17.64 million. There's also the Port Authorities Agreement, passed through, funding to Sharonville for the Cooperative Agreement with Occupancy Tax. There's postage services and legal services at MSD, et cetera. Item number eight is Resolution Number P022-24. This authorizes the award of RFQ 104-23 to KZF Design. This is for architectural design services. It's for a stadia and parking. We have item number nine, which is a Resolution P023-24, authorizing an agreement between the Village of Lincoln Heights and the Board, as well as the Sheriff, for, this is a revenue agreement for patrol services in Lincoln Heights, valued at a total over three years of $2.806 million. In human resources, item number 10, we have the approval of a tentative collective bargaining agreement with IUOE Local 20. These are the building managers and senior building managers in county facilities. Item number 11 is the approval of a temporary collective bargaining agreement with IUOE Local 20. This is also in facilities, but for the facility maintenance workers one and two, and the HVAC techs. We have several JFS items. Item number 12 is Resolution Authorizing the Agreement with Children's Have Options in Caring Environments and the Board for Independent Living Services at $100,000. Item number 13 is Resolution Authorizing an Agreement with SJO Kids Doing Business's New Path for Independent Living Services at $1.4 million. Item number 14 is a Resolution Authorizing an Agreement with Step Higher Nellows Place. This is for also independent living services at $500,000. Item number 15 is a renewal with Bunker Hill Haven for Boys for $200,000 for group home services. Item number 16 is a Resolution Authorizing Renewal with Mayo Home for Youth Development for Group Home Services for $500,000. Item number 17 is authorizing renewal, number three, of the Agreement with Step Higher Nellows Place for Group Home Services at $450,000. We have several resolutions relating to planning and development. Item number 18 is a $45,000 agreement with New Life Furniture Bank for free home furnishings to help facilitate the transition out of homelessness for individuals. Item number 19 is Resolution Authorizing an Agreement between the Board and the Village of Lachlan for a mini-planning grant for the West Wyoming Avenue Business District Master Plan. Item number 20 is a Resolution with Lachlan. Item number twenty, uh, is a resolution with Lachlan's Building Services, this is an agreement, uh, to, uh, between, an agreement between Hamilton County and Lachlan to ensure that the, um, uh, the building services that are being done there on, by the county on behalf of Lachlan are being done in accordance with the most recent version of the building code. Item number twenty-one, uh, is a resolution authorizing a joint agreement with, um, the Board of County Commissioners and the Village of Gulf Manor. Uh, this is another mini planning grant for thirty thousand dollars for the Los Anteville, uh, redevelopment plan. Uh, item twenty-two is resolution authorizing the CDBG Service Agreement, uh, with Housing Opportunities Made Equal. This is for the Fair Housing Services Program at seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, and that is for the investigation of complaints, uh, training and information for residents related to their rights, um, under Fair Housing. Uh, we have, uh, several, actually, uh, 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 seven liquor permits, where the Sheriff is reporting, uh, no objection to, uh, uh, and that's item number twenty-three. Item number twenty-four is a request for authorization to travel at the county's expense. The engineer is sending seven employees to Dayton, five employees to Hamilton, and three employees to Lebanon, all Ohio. Commissioners, that is the consent agenda, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, I'll open it up, Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. There are lots of good things going on in this consent agenda, um, I just wanted to highlight a couple of them, um, the mini planning grants, uh, I'm glad this money is getting out to these communities, Lachlan and Gulf Manor, um, to help them, uh, with some revitalization work in their communities, uh, really glad to see that hit in the ground. The other one, uh, is the purchasing, the, the very large item, it struck me because it was so large, um, so I printed this one out, and I'm wondering if, um, the seventeen million for the Indigent Healthcare Services and the twenty-seven million for senior services, are those by way of the levies?
Yes.
Okay, is, and so the, um, clear support is also a levy, isn't it?
The clear support is also a levy, yes.
Alright, so we've got three levies i- in this, um, purchasing, is that right?
That is, uh, I believe it is three in total, trying to see if there's any more that are levy-related, but I think that is it, Commissioner, yes.
Okay, alright, thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, um, only comment I wanted to make is, um, as I researched JFS and the agreements for independent living and also for group homes, it was just really great to see. I know initially when I, I first came on board, um, that a lot of our young people were being sent not only out of the city, but out of the state, I mean, far away. And so our greatest goal is to try to keep our children within, um, our city, our county, and as close to home as possible, so it's just really great to see, I think, all of these placements where Cincinnati, I think there was one in Dayton, so I'm just really happy to see that we're looking at, um, continuing to do that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, I'll make a motion to approve items four through twenty-four.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerdumas?
Yes.
There's no further business to come before us, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerdumas?
Yes.